I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Corrigan.
Rita. Rita Ebsen. Donahue. Donahue, Ebsen. Hawley.
Here.
Hawley, here. Farenwell.
Here.
Farenwell, here. Osling. Osling, here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here. Carr. Carr, Ebsen. Pittman, Ebsen. Slattery. Slattery, Ebsen. Pulos. Pulos, Ebsen. Johnson. Johnson, Ebsen. Frausto. Frausto, Ebsen. Palado. Ebsen. Viera.
Here.
Viera, present, your honor.
Thank you very much. Mr. myself. First of all, thank you very much for coming tonight to review our budget workshop. A packet was sent out last Friday to everyone's email, which included the 2018 appropriations, the agenda, as well as the revenue enhancements. I'd like for today to be a very open forum. You know, if you have questions, please feel free to ask them. I want to make sure that all your questions are answered with a budget. Kind of the format for today, I'm going to go over the expenses, the revenues, then the enhancements. I'm also going to highlight any of the changes that we have from 2017 to 2018, these significant changes. But in all, for 2018, we are proposing a $37.5 million appropriations. When you remove the contingencies, the transfers, and some other items, it works out to be a $33.6 million budget in total. Now, our revenues are projected currently at $30 million, so that says that we are appropriating $3.5 million above what our revenues are. That being said, that this is an appropriation, so this doesn't mean that we're going to be spending everything that's in this. And as we do always, we're going to closely monitor how funds are coming in and when they're going out, and make decisions on what projects we will or will not do. But starting off at the very beginning, first one we have is 4-1, the mayor's office. Significant changes for 2018 is moving the mayor's secretary from the general administration to the mayor's office budget. And pretty much everything else stayed relatively the same. So that's salary and benefits for the increase to the mayor's office. Questions, comments? Next one is the finance department, 4-2. Significant changes for this would be, again, salary and benefits for my position, as well as an increase in the overall bank fees. You'll see that in 2017, we anticipated it being $15,000. It came in at just under $23,000, so we adjusted that up for what it actually would be. In addition to that, we will be contacting our banks to find out within the best rates for any of those credit card transaction bank fees that we have, so hopefully that number will come down. Questions, comments? Next is the clerk's office. This one stayed relatively the same, a little increase of $2,000, and that has to do with vehicle stickers. It seems like every year we have a couple lasting changes, or some minor changes to the sticker program, so we wanted to account for that. Fund 4-4, the alderman. The only change to this one would be the city officials' expenses being changed from having their separate lineup and including them into the part-time salaries. This is an accounting thing that we did. Next one, 4-9, general administration. The biggest increase for this program would be the abandoned housing program. That is towards the bottom, it's $50,000. What this program is, is that this gives us funds so that we can demolish homes. At $50,000, we should be able to demolish about 15 homes, but then we get reimbursed for that. But since there's an expense associated with it, we do need to show it in the appropriations. And that's really the only significant one there. So hopefully we'll be able to take down 15 homes that are either abandoned or in severe need of demolition.
So the $50,000, that's the expenses, is the, what's the $45,000 below?
The $45,000 below.
Seven or seven-two.
Oh, okay, so those are for contingency. Those are things that we want to, I'm sorry. The abandoned house expense, okay.
That's for the grants.
That's for the grants.
So we're going to, you're allocating $50,000 in addition to the $45,000 of the grants? Is that what you're going, is that what that is?
That's the way it's, that's the way it's presented, yes.
Okay. So then to do the, what you said, 15 houses, that takes both, that takes all $95,000 or just the 15?
Mike, do you want to, Mark, the legal expenses is what, what, what expenses are, at the bottom line, what do we incur?
The expenses we incur are any attorney fees. It's usually about $3,000.
So the grant, the grant covers?
The grant covers all of the attorney fees.
So that's the 15 houses times the $3,000 in attorney's fees per house-ish.
So our general fund, whatever, would be the $3,000, but that other money would be reimbursed. That gets reimbursed quarterly.
So just a mistake, we're reimbursed the 15, we're not reimbursed the 45?
Correct. Any other questions on general administration?
So computer consulting, we had $82,000, and then there was nothing, and then there's $40,000? I don't know, we didn't spend anything.
Yes, for computer consulting, if I recall, that is going to be for both the website redesign, as well as some other enhancements. And if I recall, and stop me if I'm wrong, your day, that could be also paradigm, which is our computer consulting.
So where is paradigm now?
I may have misspoke on that one.
Because I mean, we've had paradigm all year.
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke on the paradigm.
Okay.
The $40,000, I believe, is for the website redesign.
Because then there's a $35,000 allowance for website redesign.
Yeah, the website redesign is down in contingency. The $40,000, I believe, was just, nothing was spent in 2017, but we may need it in 2018, so we're leaving an amount there for that.
Then our professional consulting, we appropriated $90,000 last year, $90,000 this year, but we spent $142,000? So is that, did we appropriate enough, or why, was there something goofy in 17?
Let me find the detail on that.
Okay, similar to telephone, too, I just want to make sure that we're okay. And then general administrative, the salaries were at 235, and then they went to 221, and that's, now it's 70? So that's a large decrease, so did you move somebody else from general?
That would be the in-house counsel, and that covers for one full-time salary position. And Marisol was also removed.
Well, Marisol had moved, I know.
Right, so that, yeah. The 235 minus Marisol, minus in-house counsel, retained the one full-time, brings it down to $7,000.
And who's that?
That'd be Mark's position.
Oh, Mark, okay.
Yeah, as far as the professional consulting, that incorporates several firms last year, 2017, including my firm and Mr. Chris Barrick's firm, and then also amounts paid to Matt Anastasia when he was no longer an employee. And we are seeing that those, those costs are going to be down this year. We're making, we're going to make a very concerted effort to make sure that those costs do not exceed budget in 2018.
Is that stuff in, oh, that's why it went down to 90 instead of $142? Okay.
Any other questions? Police department, the increases for that have to go, are going towards training for our command staff, as well as vehicle repair and general repair to the facility. They need some new tables, dentistry down in the range, and what was some of the other internal projects? Squad room.
And the archives.
And the archives. In addition, there's also the loan repayment of principal and interest on that.
And the salaries, does the service try to bake in whatever is a result of the negotiations?
Yes, it does. Any other questions?
The overtime civilian is up in the line, just your finding on that?
The clerks from the overtime.
Right, but it was 500 budgeted, or appropriated last year, we spent $5,300, now it's $34,000, something changed.
Yes, actually, when we, when we moved out of the 911 business, we had to have somebody man some of the phones up full-time, especially for jewelry locations and prisoner watches. So we now, where we weren't manning the front desk, Roman Clark, now we are. So we have to take him into account, sick time and vacation.
Okay.
The 5700, the uniforms for 18, there's nothing appropriated for it?
That goes into the payroll, so, yeah, the uniforms are, under IRS guidelines, has to be taxed, so we moved those into payroll so that we can take out the appropriate taxes for those.
Mark, did you, earlier, were you talking about contingencies, the vehicles and radios and equipment, or, you know, talked about that yet?
The contingencies are at the bottom, on page nine. Vehicles for 120 and radios and equipment. Now, the radio, those are to put on the horizon. We are going to need new vehicles for the police department. We're not planning on purchasing them this year unless we get some kind of significant windfall or grants. Now, for the radios and equipment, my understanding is by switching over to a new county frequency, we are going to need new radios. Now, with that, there should also be a grant, if I recall.
We're looking into a grant.
We're looking into a grant. And there is some value in our current radios that we may be able to sell back, or.
The current radio along the Cook County?
Oh, that's right.
They want them back.
They want them back.
And I've never been through this process before, and so when we talk about contingencies generally, the name seems to describe it pretty well, but those are funds that we'll spend if we have the money, and if we don't, we won't, is that what that is?
It's both kind of a wish list and also a means to put something on the horizon for you. When we get down to the fire department, you'll see their contingency is something like $2 million, because we're going to need a new truck. So we're not buying a new truck this year unless we get some kind of a grant or something, but I don't want to surprise you in a year and say, guys, we need a new truck. So that's a way to kind of put it on the horizon for you. Any other questions? That's 911, or 911 department. Again, you'll see a significant decrease as we outsourced our telecommunications to both Cook County and Orland Fire Protection District. There is still a cost associated with that, which would be the $400,000. There are also still telephone costs associated with that. However, I would like to note that we are going to be meeting with AT&amp;T in the next couple of weeks to see what we can do to reduce our overall telephone item, because that is a big ticket item. And the salaries, you see, that's for the final payouts for any of our full-time telecommunications.
So that would be incurred earlier in the year?
That was already incurred.
And unemployment, there's some people who are filing for unemployment?
Yes, there are a few telecommunications that did not find employment, so they are.
Two.
Two?
Two.
And then the $400,000, is that the cost for the?
That's our best estimate. Now, the call, the cost for both Orland, for Orland Fire Protection is based off the calls that we receive, and for Cook County is also the same, we're going to base off the call line? Yes. So it may fluctuate. If we have a very low number of service calls, that number will go down. If we have a high number of service calls, that number could go up.
It just seems weird to me to keep that as like a 911 department. It seems like it's more of a general admin now instead of a department.
We could look into moving that over to.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a cost of running the city now, it's not really a department anymore.
Yeah, I think just for this, at least for the 2018 budget, we wanted to keep those costs visible, since we're still paying off employees, still paying unemployment, where we.
Well, that stuff should stay, but the 400 contracted seems to make more sense to go maybe in the general, but it doesn't matter.
We could divide it up appropriately to have fire and police, if that's what we want to do. But we can look into that for the 2019.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Fire department, this, there wasn't any real significant change, only a $50,000 increase. But the items of note for this would be repairs to vehicles, as well as equipping our apparatus so that they all have the similar equipment from vehicle to vehicle to vehicle. Currently, we don't have all the same equipment on every single vehicle, so sometimes they have to take from one vehicle to put out another. So it would be beneficial for us to have every single piece of equipment to be fully equipped. In addition, we found out that we don't currently have any spare hoses. The hoses that we have on the trucks are the only hoses that we have. So if there are hoses that needs to go for testing or repair, we are out of hose. So this is going to put in for a couple new sets of hoses, so that we can have some in reserves. And then also, we have the loan principal payment on that for $10,000. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the ambulance.
I was actually, that's the ambulance.
I don't see anything here for shoelaces. Can I tell you that story?
No, I didn't know that story.
Jim Van Jordan, who was our fire chief probably 40 years ago, now he's fire chief, I can say it a little way. When he came in, the fire department was in such bad condition that he required a purchase order process with the new place. He's very young, and he got a purchase order requisition for shoelaces one day. He asked the ambulance crew why they wanted that, it was for tourniquets. So we're beyond that, apparently?
Yes.
I'm doing all right.
Okay, any other questions? Yes.
Again, the $40,000 for the vehicle and truck maintenance, we spent $71,000. Are we really confident that that's enough?
We're hoping so.
I know we're hoping.
Although we just had another vehicle go down today.
And we're going to look at trying to recruit some of those costs, because some of the things that we found that, we're using a different vendor, and we're going to try and go back at the fire service and get recruits of the cost, because there were these things that they should have caught, or that they said that they fixed and they did not repay for. We're trying to recruit some of those costs.
Now, we did increase it from 2017 to 18, because we do have an aging fleet. I mean, we did have a new ambulance, but our two trucks are old, and so we will need to replace them at some point in time, so we did increase that a little bit. But again, something like vehicle maintenance, we don't necessarily know. And you'll also see for this one, under contingency machinery and equipment, that would be for two new pieces of equipment at $1.9 million essentially. Any other questions? 423, EMA, this is the first year that we're having an EMA budget. So I sat down with Don Marchbanks and one of his staff, and we went through everything that they need. The biggest item for this would be the other contractual, that is for Don's services. And then, again, it's going to be vehicle equipment and repair. As the next biggest item at $7,500, we sat down and said, okay, what vehicle needs what to get them up in operational? Because there are a few vehicles that are in their fleet that are not currently operational. Questions?
Was, were these budget items previously?
They were split between the fire department and police departments. And, you know, it was, Don has done a great job with the EMA, but he's also been kind of begging, borrowing, and stealing to get what he needs for his people. I, you know, when we sat down, we're going to get them training, the training that they need, going to send them to a conference, as I recall, that they need, as well as getting them just basic supplies, cone and flashers, so that when they are out on the street, they look like an official department of the city. Not that they didn't before, Don, but we're going to make it look nice, and get them the stuff they need.
Does this save us a lot of money?
Yes. Any other questions? Civil service, the increase for this one is because we had to do a police-fire test, and I believe maybe a lieutenant and sergeant test as well for 2018. Our lists are expiring, we use those lists to hire our new patrol officers and firefighters, and we hire a good number of firefighters, so.
Those tests are that expensive?
Yes, they are. Between the materials, administering the test, the time for the, for reading the test, and then the interview panel. And it's better to have tests done by a third party, that way we are not in the business of testing. Yeah. Any other questions? 430, public works, this line item actually went down. And the biggest changes for here would be machinery and equipment. They have a lot of older equipment and machinery over in public works, so this would go towards both repair and replacement of some of that machinery and equipment.
Mike, did you note these, could you just shout out the account numbers, as you find?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, machinery is at the bottom, 8040. Any other questions?
Where, where's it down, I guess?
Uh, the overall item, it was 2.8 million, now it's 2.7. At the operating totals?
Yeah, right.
And the savings there came from part-time salaries, 5,200. And just generally, we were able to reduce numbers across the board. Now, there's also water fund, which is the other half of public works, and you'll see some expenses there, so.
So I know that there's, you're also proposal for, you know, bulk, change in our bulk item process?
Yes.
But we won't be, are we, I guess we're not anticipating reducing staff, whether it's new staff otherwise, rather than going out and picking up bulk?
Well, we're going to talk about different means to do that here shortly. There's a couple different models that we can, we can look at. Oh, I wanted to throw something in there for the purposes of having the outcome of a discussion later on. Next, department building, 450. The significant change here is under 6695, other contractual, that's for our inspectors, they are now W9 employees, correct?
1099.
1099, I'm sorry, 1099.
Yeah, but they're not technically employees, they're independent contractors. They were being paid out of salaries previously.
Out of part-time?
Yes. That's correct.
So what's included in part-time now, during this?
Part-time salaries.
Because this is full-time, right?
Well, there's, there's two line items, a full-time and part-time.
Right.
And those, what we just mentioned, that's 1099 employees, if you will, are moved out of salaries, part-time, and down to their own new line item, other contractual.
Right, but that just moved 40,000 down there.
Correct.
Left 95,000 in there, so what, what is the rest of that part-time?
Those are the, the rest of the part-time employees in the building department.
City inspectors are all part-time.
I'll, I'll plant it here to say.
So it's, inspectors are not this?
Like the plumbing inspector, the electrical, those are moved to contractual.
So the regular building inspectors are still part-time? I thought you were moving them down there, and I'm like, what's not part-time?
I should be more clear, there's a split between regular, part-time, and then contractual.
Okay, got it. And contractual is special, and that's why they're down.
Yeah.
Correct.
But, but so then, our, between those three lines, are, you know, the budget's going up like $50,000 or something like that? Between the top two lines, you have 6695? And I guess my question is why?
It's about 10, no, they're going, it's going up by $10,000.
Well, I mean, if I look at the actual 17 versus appropriation 18, so salaries full-time going up $9,000, salaries part-time's going up $105,700, and then you got $41,000 plus down in other contractual services. Am I reading that right? Compared to actual? Give me just a second, I got to find it. Okay, we're, we're projecting for two, two new positions that, that may develop. So if they, if they do come to be, we want to have them in there so we can pay them.
And what is the development manager?
The new development manager, then another part-time person. So that, that's where that comes from.
We didn't have anybody for a while this year, too, so that's why the actuals are over, not what they?
Yes. Yeah, there was a part-time clerical staff that got swept over from building department over to public works, which is why the actual. We've been down staff?
Yes, right, yes.
Any other questions? 480, risk management. Now, this is one that we don't have a whole lot of control. We do have control over the medical insurance premiums and the life insurance premiums, and also the buildings and vehicle premiums, but everything below that, it's based on our claims, and number of claims that we have. So we're using historical data to try and come up with these. I'm hoping that these come lower than that, obviously, because that would generate some significant savings for the city. Any questions? Planning departments? Not a whole lot in the planning department.
So you hope that the new person in the building department is going to do some of the planning?
Yes, the goal for the development managers is that they would have a planning and a building background, and so that they would be able to handle all the, the building aspect, as well as the zoning, any kind of downtown plans that we have, redevelopment plans, as well as any zoning, or any other variances that may come up. Any questions? Marketing, 495. Again, not too much in this budget. The professional consulting would be for any kind of a five-year marketing plan, as well as any consulting services that we would need for marketing. Probably better to have a, use different parties, vendors, to do our marketing on our behalf, once we have a plan in place.
Um, Mike?
Yes?
Fifty, oh, um, salaries, part-time?
Yes, that is for, um, our, um, videographers. Corrected?
Yeah.
People that know for the T one. Fifty-two hundred.
Oh, fifty-two hundred, okay, fair, thanks. And, and I just, I know we're talking numbers here, but, uh, Mike, I just, including this from this perspective of the, um, professional consulting, you know, amount they're holding in there, uh, how would the decision be made about what to, you know, what kind of services to engage in? Is that just gonna be done internally at the city? Is there a city council committee that's gonna be involved, or?
What I would like to do is, um, hire a firm to help develop a five-year marketing plan that would identify tangible projects for us to do over the next five years. Once those projects are identified, we can either go out for, uh, requests for qualifications, requests for proposals, or select a local vendor that may be able to provide those services, depending on the dollar amount of what that project would be.
That is right.
That's, that's the plan.
That's good.
Any other questions? Four ninety-seven, rec center, again, this is a new budget for twenty eighteen. Uh, we found it was best to divide out those costs because they were kind of intermingled between general administration and, I think, a couple other places. Um, significant ones for this would be the ten thousand dollars for small equipment. They need, uh, a television over at the rec center, they need speaker equipment, they need some general maintenance equipment over there. So I sent down Bob Jackson, and we came up with a whole laundry list of things that they need over there. So that we can program that space, you know, the eighteen hours a day or twelve hours a day that it's open.
So you're saying these, all these expenses were done in the past, they were just somewhere else?
Sprinkled throughout the budget, where we had money, we would use it.
Does rec center, uh, generate any revenues?
We have a, well, they, we, I don't believe we, no, we, we have.
There's nothing coming in.
No. We do have an agreement with the, with the park district, where they can program that space as well, and there's a hierarchy for picking of times and events that will go for programming that space.
Yeah, all of the salaries and benefits were, were paid for by other departments, and then partway through the year, we started separating some of the costs that we can identify. What are we spending at that, at that building? And so that, the, the twenty-seventeen actual numbers are not necessarily representative of what actually really did happen.
Okay.
Uh, but in twenty-eighteen, we'd like to see, you know, a better picture of what's going on.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, just.
Are there any metrics that are measured, you know, number of programs, people participating in programs and whatever, that we can kind of over time see what progress is over there?
Yeah, I, I know that Bob has a month or four, I'll see if we can start to track participants. Any other questions? Okay, Water Department, five twenty. The major change of note would be six-six-five-zero, maintenance, repair, outside contractors. If I recall, this is for a number of different items that we need to help maintain our water system. There is a vault that is where the main line for water coming from Chicago comes into the city that is in desperate need of repair. There's also a, in this, elsewhere in the budget, there's a, a meter that needs to be replaced, a very large meter. And then we need a, 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 a new pump. We have, uh, three different pumps at one of our stations, and one of the pumps is no longer working. And then we also need improvements to our SCADA system, and our SCADA system allows us to monitor our water system. Also included in this, under eighty-fifty, is vehicles, this would be for the purchase of three new public works, single axle trucks. The fleet over there is aging, and, uh, we do need to replace some of those vehicles.
Is there any, in here, anything envisioned for, we talked about the meters generally? Is there anything in here that kind of covers that possible project, or looking at it, or?
Uh, not at this time, uh, it would be nice to have the radio reads, the wireless, so we wouldn't be in the business of walking around to every single meter in the city and touching it, uh, but at this point in time, this budget does not include that.
Do we know how many defective meters are out there, and maybe we don't?
Yeah.
Effective meters?
Meters that are not working solely, or not, they're all anywhere?
Um, we did have a study on the larger ones, and we just got back, not, just like a percentage of the larger ones. I wanna say, you know, it'd be between fifteen and twenty percent of them. Um, and some of them passed, some of them failed, but, uh, we're addressing that. Actually, Randy and I are gonna be, uh, addressing some of those, um, real soon. But as far as like, um, the homeowner ones, uh, of course, as they come bad or something like that, we've been changing them out.
And do we look, I'm just asking because this is just, you know, one example, which may or may not mean anything, but I was talking to somebody I know recently, whose house is clearly using more water than they're being metered for, and I presume it's cause the meters, you know, something's wrong there. So do we look at, like, just historical usage and say, gee, this, this address is like, why is their usage down like to a thousand gallons a month? And we should go over another debt meter, or do we assist away doing that?
I couldn't answer that. Um, the Smart Fusion, I just know that Linda does this, she has, there's some readers that have zero read, negative read, or low usage. There's a, there, and I don't know what the percentage is, I just know that she does this every month.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, so they, that's part of the, so the way the meters are read, the first to say the tenth is when the meters are read. The tenth and the twentieth is when all the water guys go out and find, you know, do all the ones where, hey, I couldn't get a read cause there was a bad wire, or it was a negative usage, or a low usage, and high usage. So she, so they, she runs a report every month, and, and she, and they got a couple of guys go out and do that every month, where they, where they do follow up on the things that were off, off the chart.
Yeah.
Whatever, and I don't know what number she sets, is it fifteen or twenty or thirty percent higher, lower than the previous? And then, and you know, there's two or three check boxes, I just know that, that she does this. She does it as monitor, but the meters, that's a whole different story.
And going back to the large meter tests that we just did, some of the meters that were both failed was because they were not able to be tested. There's a valve on either side of the meter, and if one of the valves is not working or broken, they were not able to accurately test the meter, so therefore it's considered as failed because they weren't able to test a flow-through. Any questions? Four hundred, Business District, uh, the major item of note is that we will be putting up the gateway signage here.
The, uh, is that loan, is that just gone now?
Until we have, uh, new information, it's not in there, we can always do a, a appropriations amendment.
Yeah.
If we do that, we will be pursuing that loan, but at the time of appropriation for this, there wasn't enough information, so I didn't wanna include something in there that I wasn't sure was gonna happen or not.
What, and so the six hundred thousand street, streets gateway includes the, the?
The gateway signage?
Uh-huh.
And, uh, a few other projects as well. Any other questions? Okay, five fifty, Golf Course. The major items of note for this year would be six-three-three-zero, Proshop merchandise. That is an increase, apparently you were running out of golf balls last year to sell. Uh, food for, uh, no, uh, six-three-five-zero, alcohol embarrassers. Again, that's for the purchase of the alcohol, but we profit from that, so with an increase of the cost, we'll hopefully see a corresponding increase in the revenue. And then, repair. Uh, six-six-five-two, parking lot maintenance. The parking lot to the north of the building is virtually non-existent, uh, so we will be looking at replacing and repairing that. Any other questions?
The salaries are, uh, a lot? I mean, that compared to appropriation of?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, cause, uh, what this is also reflecting is, uh, proposing creation of a new position, which be a recreation manager that would oversee both the golf course and the recreation, the John DeRea Recreation Center. And that salary split between the two, correct?
Yes.
I believe we budgeted sixty?
I can look it up, okay.
I wanna say sixty thousand.
So are we still going to have a full-time employee at the rec center?
Yes.
And this person is gonna?
Yes, and it's yet to be seen how we, how we structured this, uh, but the idea would be that both the recreation center and the golf course would report to this one person. Cause right now, I have the golf course reporting to me, the recreation department reporting to me, as well as finance, and a couple other things, so this would help to streamline that.
Six, sixty-five is?
Sixty-five, and that's on the high end.
So that it's hard to say, cause rec center has just got sixty-nine thousand for full-time, but it'd be?
I believe the cost is split fifty-fifty.
It just seems like the salaries, I mean, so they're going from actual sixty-six thousand to a hundred and thirty-seven, and that's, you know, sixty thousand right there, and then part-time?
If I recall, also, one of our golf department employees is part-time for part of the year before. Am I correct in that, Dave?
Yep.
Was part-time for part of the year, and then went full-time halfway through the year.
You appropriated for water, I see.
Yes, we did, and those, yes. This will be the first year that.
Yeah, the, the golf course, uh, showed a profit in twenty-seventeen, and then we're hoping that if there's a profit in twenty-eighteen, it'll be able to pay its own water, back to the water department.
Questions? Six hundred, motor fuel tax. Pretty self-explanatory.
Um, Mike, under, um, Public Works, there was an item, uh, line item for salt, it was very low.
That's, um, that's the purchase of salt that we actually use at the buildings, and it comes in a pallet, and they're in bags for like, um, on the stairs of City Hall, and, uh, in front of the police department, the fire department, stuff like that. It's a pallet, but, um, we actually reduced it because, um, I believe it lasts like about two years. The pallet that we buy, and I think it was what, six hundred and sixty bucks or something, it lasts about two years. Maybe this winter might be a hold there for it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else for MFT?
Well, I just, um, am curious if we think that, uh, given what I see out in the world, that the budget for street resurfacing and repair is sufficient?
It's never enough.
It's just more repair than resurfacing, you're not gonna resurface anything.
Right, and, and basically, the budget is our, our expected revenues for motor fuel taxes plus, plus the, uh, balance on hand to start the year.
Anything else? Police and fire pensions, uh, I would like to note that this does include the three hundred and ten thousand dollars that was agreed upon at a previous meeting to pay for, to include for both police and fire. Any questions there? Debt service, principal and interest payments. Public library. They look at Dave correctly, or do you, they already?
They've already passed their appropriations already, so we're just basically including it with the city as, as required by law, but they, these are the, the numbers straight from the library.
Any question on public library? Which then brings us to exhibit A, our revenues. So these are our projections for twenty-eighteen. Uh, this is a case of historical data on what we see that's going on, uh, which totals six point two million dollars essentially.
Sixteen?
Uh, sixteen point two million, I was about to say, sixteen point two million dollars. Below that, you see our water and sewer fund. Before grants and reimbursements, it's five point two million dollars.
Is this supposing the rates remain the same?
If, if the rates remain the same, corrected?
Yes.
Golf course. And then our other various revenues. Any questions on our revenues?
Okay, the various property tax, um, incomes are based on the levy or the levy that you think we're really gonna get?
Well, they're based on the extension that we're expecting to, uh, that we've extended. But we may not collect all that, but we wanna have it in here at the, we don't wanna go lower than someone said, well, how come you might let's lower than what you're, what you're extending?
But there's a, there's a good chance that they're back to that.
Correct, absolutely.
Which then brings us to the revenue enhancements. So included in your packet was fourteen different areas that staff have identified throughout the preparation process for revenue enhancements for the city. Uh, of the fourteen, uh, it's staff's opinion that we need to do the top three. Uh, the first one being increasing the water rates, and the raw water and sewer rates, and increasing that by a dollar ninety-eight per thousand gallons. This would bring an additional one point two million dollars to the city, and if we continue on our current path, we will not be able to pay our water bill come November. There's another city I know that can't pay their water bill, that's Harvey. And for the, I should have backed, backed up, for these revenue enhancements, I'm hoping to get a little bit of direction from, um, council on which items you'd like for staff to pursue and bring back with, uh, further analysis, and which ones you're not interested at this time, or, or stuff that just may never happen. Uh, but again, the, the top three are things that we need to look at immediately. I know Dave did a number of presentations on the water and sewer rates, but like I said, if we continue on our current path, we will not be able to pay our water bill come November of this year.
I know you have three lines at the bottom that you have no amount, just curious why they're there.
Well, because I honestly don't know, well, for the first one, filing liens and outstanding fines, that would be for, if a property has so much in outstanding fines for tall grass, abandoned building, cars, currently, we send those monies out for collection, and rarely do we collect on those. By establishing a lien process, we can lien the property, so at time of sale of the property, we'll be able to collect back what we lien for. There is no estimate of what that number could be, because we don't know when properties are going to sell. I do know we have over a million dollars in outstanding fines right now, that we most likely will never be able to collect on, but by establishing a lien process, we would be able to collect on those at some point in time.
So those, that's not being done currently? We talked about that like two or three years ago, and we decided that that's what we wanted to do.
We are not currently establishing liens for properties.
It seems like a really good idea to me, unless it costs a fortune to do it.
Other than setting up the process and tracking them and filing with the county, and we have the existing staff that I believe could, could do that. But are there any questions or comments on the water rate?
So. So, we have a water rate and finance for how long, I mean. Dave, you came in, did presentations, we had a public gathering. Where do we go now?
Well, if I get direction from council, we will look at amending, well, we had to produce an ordinance saying that we are going to increase the water rate. We come up with a timeline and a process to do that.
All our fees and, they're all in the fine and fee schedule, so that just, you just do that in ordinance.
Yeah, we'd have to update our ordinance, the fine and fees.
So our choices are increase the water rates or cut services, right?
I mean, how would you cut services?
I'm just saying, those are our choices, those are our choices.
And it's, it's true, Dan, that most of the older men do not feel as important enough to come, I really, I have to say that.
I'm disappointed because there's a lot of smart people on this council, and they should be in this discussion, down with that.
This was their choice, I guess.
Raising the rates, again, we, I mean, we've talked about it several times, it's a very tough decision, but as Marzel just pointed out, our cash flow projections for the water fund show us going into a deficit that we can't recover from come November of 2018. So that, at that point, we would need to be borrowing against the general fund at that point, and then the general fund would have to sell more tax anticipation warrants. Right now, we're not even, we didn't even recover the seven cents that the city of Chicago passed on to us back in July, and that's costing us between four and five thousand dollars a month.
So if the increase was twenty-four percent, and Dave, this is the graph that you gave us, it would increase, if you used two thousand gallons, it would increase my bill, well, actually, by six dollars and forty-five cents.
Come on.
Uh-huh.
Does that include the sewer, the twenty percent sewer on that rate, or is that the water rate?
That, it's the twenty percent sewer in there as well, yes.
So a dollar sixty and thirty?
It, it, right, our current, our current water rate, and then twenty-four percent was just, we use that again because it's a number you're familiar with, we didn't want to introduce a random number, we had talked about the twenty-four percent in the past. Where currently, our water rate is six-eighty-eight, the sewer rate is twenty percent of that, it's one-thirty-eight, so we got a combined total of eight-twenty-six. Six-eighty-eight plus one-thirty-eight, eight-twenty-six. So this would raise the water rate by a dollar sixty-five, the sewer by thirty-three cents, grand total of a dollar ninety-eight increase. So our, our total combined would go from eight-twenty-six to ten-twenty-four.
For a thousand gallons, more.
Per, per thousand gallons, correct. And, and that, again, we did all the comparisons, there was that online article that the Tribune did, and we were on the lower side of the spectrum, and so this would put us more towards the middle, and maybe not even reaching the very middle, but more towards the middle.
And actually, seniors, the increase would normally be like less than five dollars.
If they are using a thousand.
At two thousand gallons.
Of two thousand.
So I, you know, I may have lost, I don't.
So yeah, just in terms of process, then, you know, if you want to do this, I do. Not that I want to raise rates, but you know, I don't see how much choice. We've, we've been through finance committee, and I guess ultimately defeated, is that what you're trying to get? So would we reintroduce it as an ordinance?
That would be one venue or one way to do it.
So it would come out of finance again, or just got to be prepared on the floor?
Well, I wasn't here for, when it went to finance before, but it was defeated at finance?
No.
No, it was defeated in.
Council.
Yeah, council.
All right, so it already went through finance?
Yeah.
Then it would have to come before council, so the district would like to, staff to prepare an ordinance, and staff to do that.
Well, we can't, personally, I'm not going home for it, because I don't understand what you're saying.
We don't have a choice for it. We can't become hungry, you know, I mean, I, I don't know what, I don't know.
A lot of people, you know.
Well, you know, I'd like to ask, we, I understand that there is a concern here, there are people who can't afford a dollar, I mean, there are, there are people out there like that, but it would seem to me that we could provide for those people, there was some kind of a way of, of, you know, developing a standard based on, say, someone who is on Medicaid, could be exempted from the increase. I mean, the government does provide, you know, poverty-level standards that we can follow.
Can I say another thing? We are the lowest, we are low, lower than most of the surrounding areas, is that correct?
In terms of the water rates? Yes.
Where can people go? I mean.
No, I understand, Blah.
I, I do know that the township has programs available, we have four different townships, I don't know, each of its different townships, but I know that townships typically offer bill-paying assistance if they are unable to pay their utility bills. There are also charities that are out there that are willing to help to keep people in their homes by help assisting with their bills, and that's, those are short-term fixes, those aren't long-term fixes, but there are programs available.
All the Thompsons, I, I hope you would just be open to the idea that the city needs this, and there are people who need help, and we should find ways to get them help, but the city, if you want to have a city that's viable, I don't, I don't have another way of doing it.
Well, there are many people that were, that was originally Ward's family. These people cannot pay the increase, there are a lot of dilapidated water bills in that area already.
I, I'm saying that I understand that, and that those people, you know, we need to bear that issue to help those people, but at the same time, it's not going to do them or anybody any good to have a city that can't pay, literally cannot pay for its water.
Doesn't have water at all.
That's going to be a disaster.
And then there are people who are in my area now.
Well, I, like I said, I, we should, we should think about that.
Liquid is now, that was the water now in that water, and I'm not going to vote for an increase in water in my area town, I'm not doing it.
Staff can't prepare an ordinance if it's a pleasure, is what.
We, we were, this is the, maybe already to get the motive, but personally, I would like to see.
Yeah, no action could be taken, but no action.
You could go to consensus, but you can't take action.
Exactly.
It could also be brought again before finance committee, and we could take formal action at the next meeting, I guess. Yeah, that would be fair. I just think it's got to. I, I just, I don't understand how we can abandon the fiduciary responsibility to run the city, so that doesn't go broke. I, I, we have to.
Now, maybe the people in your part of town are more affluent than my, than my part of town, and maybe they can afford it. And we look into the median income of the people in this town, what is the average median, what is the median income?
Off the top of my head, I do not know that.
Thirty, thirty-four thousand or so, sorry, thirty-four, thirty-seven thousand.
And I compare it to towns like Alsop, Wausau, maybe even Markham.
We can check.
So we should give away water? I don't, I don't understand that logic. Because right now, you're giving away water, you're paying people's water bills right now, so that's, you're turning the city to a charitable organization, so.
Next item, bulk trash pickup. So currently, on your water bill, you hear is a three-dollar per household fee to cover bulk item pickup. Right now, we have four employees who, five days a week, go throughout the alleys and pick up any couches, refrigerators, any bulk items at no charge other than this three dollars per month. So for those four employees, plus it tosses out two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year for dumpster removal of those bulk items, so we're looking at about six-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars a year to run basically free bulk item pickup. Now, this three dollars does generate a hundred-and-thirty-seven?
Hundred-and-thirty-eight, three-twelve, if you take January numbers, and the three dollars for the, and it's only for the trash three, four, and five rates, it's not for the seniors.
So it's generating a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars for a program that costs a six-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. So essentially, we are operating at a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year deficit for essentially free bulk item pickup. To help at least make this program break even, there's one of two different things that we could do. We could increase the monthly three-dollar fee that's on your water bill up to fifteen dollars per household, that would recoup approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars to make it a net equal program. Or we could do a bulk item pickup sticker program where households would come to City Hall, purchase a sticker, and slap it on their refrigerator or couch, and then Public Works would pick that item up. For these purposes, to keep it simple, I just want to show that increase of putting in on the water bill, but if we wanted to go the sticker route, I would like to do a little bit of analysis, find out how many items we pick up on a monthly basis, multiply that by twelve, divide it by the full, total cost of the program, and come up with the per sticker cost. And items that do not have a sticker on it, Public Works would not pick it up. And if it stays out there long enough, the city would ultimately have to cite the property owner for having garbage at their curb. So what I'm hoping for direction from is if the, if they're, if we're interested in pursuing this and having staff gather more information on the two different options, or if there's something that we just want to leave it as is and continue operating.
Do you have any confirmation to the sticker, or? I just, I was talking to a friend of mine at work today, and he was, or not today, but last week, and he was talking that their garbage service picks up the bulk stuff. Is that just not part of our contract, or why doesn't the garbage service pick up anything?
That's.
He says there's a limit, and then if it's over that limit, they can have one thing outside of the, of the thing, and then if it's over that, then they have to buy these stickers and put them on there.
My understanding is the contract does not currently include bulk item because we have been providing that service. That would be another option, that we can go to our collector, our, our refuge collector and say, we'd like to include this, but then there would be an associated cost.
Right.
For that. Or, or redo the program where they say that, you know, you need to purchase this sticker from, from our garbage collector.
Well, they can purchase it at a few different places in town, including City Hall.
Go ahead, Laurie. Would you share with us what you pay on your bulk pickup in Oak Forest?
Yeah, we have a private company that builds us, and we can use bulk, we can just pay a elaborate bulk rate fee through them, and no matter what I put out there, they pick it up, anything, they'll pick it up except electronics, or you have a regular per dumpster fee, like I believe Blue Island does now, with the per dumpster fee you pay for any dumpster you have or whatever, but we, they didn't, the sticker did not work in Oak Forest, stickers were being removed, stuff was being dumped, so they just decided to go with the hauler using the bulk rate or the other pickup.
And what do you pay per month?
I pay seventy dollars a month for bulk.
And the city charges you that? Or is that separate?
No, direct from the hauler.
Oh, okay.
The hauler, the hauler base, and direct in the hauler. You don't have a choice, that's just what it is, that was our hauler, chosen by the city, so.
All right. Generally speaking, is there a kind of common practice through the suburbs in this regard?
It's kind of all over the place. Many municipalities, direct bill from the hauler. Other places, it's, it's again through the city, but when it comes to, I haven't done the survey yet to determine what the bulk collection programs are for other municipalities.
Yeah, it would be helpful, something. I think so. I, I, it does seem to me that, you know, personally, I would like to see.
Pros and cons of each.
In the end, I'd rather see ours, Public Works folks doing things than that, you know, and then.
We were coming from our children, question?
Yeah, I feel compelled, just throw this off. There's many options for us, a lot of these options have been offered to deal with, always with the content or the intent to be more conservative on the constituents. When we did the negotiation for the contract for the garbage, okay, and that's it, you could, you could add the bulk down there, you could even say, you guys do all the filling in yourselves, okay? And the city plan would have to bill later on, okay? And they'd deal directly with the constituent, cost more with constituent, okay? But Mr. Marzel, like he said, right now, we're paying six-hundred-some-thousand dollars to run the service. Obviously, though, if we go to the sticker program, okay, it might be once a week pickup. So all these things have to be figured out, and Mr. Marzel would have to sit down and analyze how the best, most efficient way to do it, to be most conservative for the beneficiary of the constituents, okay? So instead of every day right now, Monday through Friday, the sticker program might be once a week, every two weeks, once a month. It depends on what the council, the hard decisions that you, the council has to make. Mr. Marzel or the administration could come discuss it and figure out the best way we think is best for the constituents, but final, final line is, the corporate authority has to make the final decision. You have a small bill, we want to balance budgets, I do, but the corporate authority has to make our decisions. All I can do is oversee what money comes in, and what goes out. If I don't like certain things, I'll question it and precautionary. So when you approve appropriation, as some of you said, it's a wish list, but it's also a budget. So, but if, once you approve that budget, as we all know, that gives you pretty much free hand to spend that money, unless there's a questionable, that the mayor would have to come in and say, no, we can't do that. The mayor has to come, he makes these hard decisions also. Otherwise, once you approve appropriation, it's done. Now, if you want to change all that, the corporate authority, and then again, discussion with the administration. Staff also.
Any other questions? I think the logic is to do a survey, figure out regarding that, the different options, pros and cons regarding that program.
And then can we present that to finance committee?
Yes.
I mean, some cities just do like a spring cleanup and a fall cleanup, where they just do it twice a year. When I say, this is your week. Where they say, this is your week to get rid of everything. And other than that, it's up to the homeowner to get rid of it.
Alright, so staff will prepare a survey and find out what's option and present the, present the options and hopefully have a recommended best option. Uh, next item is the contract for, for trash pickup is going to increase in July. So we do need to increase that by the three percent come July, so we want to be a little proactive on that so that we're not one month in the rears on that. So those are the top three that we really do need to take some action on. The rest of these are kind of optionals that are out there. Uh, number one being a places of eating tax at two percent. So this would be an extra two percent tax on any food or beverage that is consumed on-site or any restaurant that has a table and chair. So if you go to Maple Tree and you and your wife or you and your husband have a hundred-dollar bill, that would be an extra two dollars on that bill that would go to the city. Or if you go to McDonald's and you spend ten dollars at McDonald's, which would be a really nice meal on McDonald's, that's twenty cents. Now, this projection is, I think on the low end, it's conservative. I think it'd probably be more than the forty thousand, but would that be something that you would like us to do a little bit more research on and present?
Were we able to do that?
Yes, as a non-home rule community, we are able to establish a places of eating tax.
Really?
Yes.
We don't, they don't pay any, we don't have any special tax on those establishments at this time?
Not that I'm aware of. There is one, there is a business that's.
It is three taxes, yeah.
I think that's something we should, again, give a feedback, as to pros and cons, so everybody's well informed.
Okay, the next one would be the addition of a red light camera. Now, this is about compliance. I know we put this under revenue enhancement, but this is about compliance. There are a number of different state routes. This would be have to, and a recommendation by?
Red speed. We have, they have to do a study and find out where compliance would be helpful to prevent crash. They're currently doing that.
You should bring in a red light.
Reach out, they're going to check all of our, all of our intersections that we do not have red light cameras and they're going to let us know if there's anything that we can use. That state statute, it has to reach a threshold, so.
So that's really out of control, but we'll see what numbers come back from that.
But is that something that you're interested in us pursuing further? The next one would be increasing the metro parking by twenty-five percent. Currently, we have two different rates. The far lot is a dollar, the closer lots are above twenty-five. So that would increase them from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five, and a dollar twenty-five to a dollar fifty. I do have to note that those are restricted funds. They can only be spent on improvements to our parking lots. Sorry, I've driven through the parking lots. They could use some improvements.
What do you want other, what other town parks charge?
Again, I'd want to do the survey and then present it.
If we go fifty cents, I, you know, I'd say. Oak Park is probably a fifty cents to a dollar or more.
Yeah, a lot of people park in Blaine.
And Grange are the same, higher, way higher.
Okay, so we can do a survey and present it.
Yeah, Chinese. Don't just check Oak Park, but check, check the ones a little further down.
The electric one. Go ahead.
Yes.
With that parking, there are many people who do not park in that parking lot on that street. They park in front of everyone's house. And they don't pay the fee, they just park on the street.
So that's maybe something we should look into.
It's actually, it's not just there, they do that at the barrow.
South Park. They, it's free, they, it's. Well, that's what they're doing. They're not parking in the parking lot, they're parking in front of the neighbor's homes.
So you know, that's something we should look into.
They're going cars, walking around my house every day.
Residents of Blue Island.
Every day, and they can park there.
They're part, the residents, they're taking that, they're residents.
Well, they're parking in front of residents' homes, every day.
But they're residents.
You could make that.
No, they're coming from somewhere else. They don't live in where, in that neighborhood. They are coming from somewhere else, parking and parking in front of your house.
Well, let's, let's do this, where we start off with the ones from out of towners and go after them. Then if we see those blue islanders, then we're going to have to get a zone or a zone.
Do you have a parking problem with the city already?
So the city will look at, um, compliance, make sure, and then also potentially establish zones in our, our metro areas. Uh, next one is increasing our ambulance fees by five percent. Achieved at a survey of our surrounding communities. We're a little bit below the median right now for our ambulance fees. There are communities like Alseb that are significantly higher than ours. So I think that we could potentially increase the fees and still be in line with our area communities. I would also like to note for that, that our mileage is only at ten cents a mile, where other communities are closer to twenty cents a mile or fifteen cents a mile.
Fifteen.
Uh, so that would be another area we could, now granted, our trips are short. But, um, that would be another area we could look at increasing the fees. We do have a, both a resident and a non-resident rate currently, so our residents are charging a lower rate than our, I'm sorry, our residents have a lower rate than our non-residents. Since our residents are supplementing with property taxes, we are charging our non-residents at a higher rate. So is that something we'd be interested in pursuing?
And then a question to that regarding that money, does that go specifically to the fire department for equipment, or has it been spent on something?
Uh, currently, it does not, I think it goes on a job. We, we could have an ordinance that would do that.
If, again, that's my, if I look into that, that money goes this back. Uh, right, right now, it's just going back into the general fund. The general fund is paying all the prior salaries, et cetera, so indirectly it's being. It is being paid, yeah, okay.
The next one would be increases to our building, plumbing, electrical, and permit fees. Back in 2014, we did a comprehensive survey of our building fees, and that went down, we did increase them. It's about time to look at doing that again. I would say that by looking at our fees, we are on the low end. Uh, next one is on vacant property registration. We currently have a vacant property registration program. Uh, these are for bank-owned properties that have to register with the city that they are vacant, so banks are paying for these. We could look at increasing the fees for that, and then again, that's paid by the banks. But the other part of that is we do need to have better compliance.
Yes. On a lot of these, we need better compliance, yes. I say double. That's coming from the banks, who cares? Yeah, right.
Uh, next one would be for business license, liquor license, and contractor fees. In looking at our liquor licenses, we are on the low end for that. We are currently in the process of reviewing that and proposing increases. Contractor licenses, those are typically contractors that don't live in town that are doing work in town. Uh, and then business licenses, again, we are probably on the low end for those. Is that something we'd be interested?
Keep it at a little bit. Outside contract, that gets passed on. Keep that on the lower end, because that all gets passed on to.
Okay.
These are smaller, make that pretty small.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
Uh, rental housing inspection, we currently have a program where home, rental properties are inspected at change of occupancy or once per year annually. Um, and we, again, can look at increasing the fees for this. Currently, in doing a, a quick analysis, we're not covering the cost of our inspectors' time to go out to the property. And look, there is a long list of things that they do check, and it does take time for the paperwork and then for them to transport to and come back. Uh, so we, we are currently operating that program at a loss by doing a quick analysis. So we could look at increasing those as well.
Yeah, I think that's important because it's really for the protection of the renter, at least properly done, so.
Exactly.
The annual inspection is only for four units or more, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not so one, but two units, even, or three, two or three. And then also, again, compliance with that, I'm not sure that that happens. And I'm also, I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure that when somebody moves out and somebody moves in, that's hardly ever happened. Because I didn't even know that was a thing, and I'm a landlord, I didn't even know that was a thing until I was an alderman. And I had owned, I owned rental property for ten years, fifteen years before that. So, I mean, I think we need to, I think we need to let some people, we need to let the landlords know.
We need to do an education campaign.
Yeah, there's need to be education for sure.
Does the city, you know, automatically become aware, I would think so, when the rental change?
They don't, because the water bills don't change. The all utilities that change are not city. So there's no way to follow up with that.
We have a whole bunch of apartment buildings that have individuals nowadays, cash only, no contract, and people are just walking in and out, and no inspections are being done.
Well, and there are people that are moving in and out on the weekends when there's not a lot of staff, you know? And so you don't know if they've actually had the inspection or not, and there's a lot of crappy apartments in this town that.
Well, it seems like it would be, the renters would want to have their apartments inspected, they would be enforcement actors in a way.
Well, this also would provide an avenue for renters that are living in poor conditions to. So we will pursue that. Uh, establishing the lien process, we talked about, about that, that's something I would like to pursue. And then the last two are motor fuel, city tax, and home rule sales tax. Both of those would have to be by referendum, and I don't even know if that's something that, um, the council would be interested in pursuing at this point in time. There are no numbers associated with that because going through referendum is a whole other process. But I did want to throw everything on the table that we were able to identify, and that is another option available to us. The other option is waiting until the twenty, twenty? Okay, twenty, twenty.
See what we got.
Twenty-twenty, uh, census and see if we go over the twenty-four thousand threshold. Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Yeah, we are over, but we'll, we'll.
My only fear now, in our personal side, with immigration additional question, whether you're legally in that, take, when we did the last census, that was one of the problems, a lot of people didn't participate for fear that that information was going to get to the feds, especially ICE. Now, if that question is placed on a form questionnaire, you know that I'm not going to participate, that's one. Now, on another, on another subject, but let me tell you, personally, as an attorney, now with ICE coming to the courts, and I've had two clients taken into custody after going with me in court, outside the courthouse. Now I'm hearing people saying, you know what, we're paying our bond, and we're not coming back. So now you've got people who committed crimes and are not going to come back. So now the whole judicial process is going to go out of whack because people are going to say, you know what? Yeah, you arrested me, I posted a bond, adios, I'm not coming back. So that's going to be another issue.
So just to summarize, um, we're interested in pursuing everything on this list except for the last two, the referendum items, I assume. Uh, and so then we will be bringing these back to the various committees as we get information. And then the appropriations will be going to, I want, I forget which year, the next board meeting or the following, but we will be having it before March, what, who needs to be filed, as you say.
Yeah, twenty-seventh, the next, in February, then there's the one in thirteen.
Thirteenth of March, I think is what.
So just, oh, okay. I just would like to, I guess I say, as we, we evidently have a structure as said earlier, um, you know, I, I, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure the city is meeting its needs. So to me, it seems like we, you know, we need you to do what you said you're going to do, which is to come back with recommendations. But we also would be to recognize, as soon as possible, if we are not going to generate the revenue we need, then we have to look at cuts. That's, that's why I say, I don't want that.
I'm going to be preparing quarterly reports on how both revenue expenses that are coming into the seat so that you are kept apprised of, of what's going on.
Can you, can you maybe do that for what we appropriate for Exhibit A, that we were going to have coming in last year, and what we had for this year?
We have to.
We hardly ever see that, but I don't think we ever see that. Until the audit report. And even that sort of.
Any other questions from the other? Thank you. Oliver, go ahead.
Mr. Marzal, would you please check the median income of some of the russ around the municipalities that we're to, to come in line with? That's one part we can rely with the median income, and I'll be compared with those people who live in Homewood. Now, you're going to open an answer.
So the surrounding communities?
These surrounding communities get their median income.
If we have to.
Thank you, sir.
Any other from the other? Mr. Marzal, anything else that you need?
That would be it for the senior.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, again, again.
Thank you very much.
Again, there's no public comment, but again, if there was anybody wanting to make a comment, time right now is eight-thirty-two. If not, in your motion to adjourn this hearing regarding appropriations, motion, Malala Fair, well, second Malala Fair, you need a vote? All in favor? I agree. And your watch, it's eight-thirty-three. Enter my.